Hello, good evening. How is everybody tonight?
Good.
Excellent. Appreciate you joining us. My name is Mindy Peterson. I am the Public Involvement Director at Parsons. So we are the lead design, oh, thank you, firm on this project, Revive I-70. Joined by John LeBlond, right back here hiding behind me. He's the Deputy Project Manager and we're going to walk through Revive I-70, tell you a little bit more about the project, and we're also going to prepare you for the public hearing that is going, that is now underway. And we have a public comment period that is part of that hearing that I'm going to spend a lot more time talking about as well. So first of all, thank you for taking the time to join us for this public hearing for the project. We wanted to give you an idea of what we've been up to since our first meeting. So we had our first meeting to launch the project early this year, and then earlier this summer, we were right next door at IU East, and we had a public meeting then, and we shared a little bit more details, and we told you about what was happening with the project and what type of improvements to expect, and we had some comments from the public. Those comments came to us in writing, which is great. We appreciate that. Now, we are at the public hearing portion of this project, a little bit different. We'll walk through the nuance there. And then John again is going to set the stage and tell you what to expect with Revive I-70, what type of improvements. If you had a chance to see some of the boards that are out there this evening, you've had a chance to talk to some project team members, see some of the improvements that are being planned, and get a better sense of what we're talking about there. Then we're going to talk about what happens from here. What can you expect to hear from the team? We're also going to make sure that you know how to share your comments, stay in touch, follow the project. Then we are going to have the public comment portion, and we'll talk plenty more about that. Perfect segue. Let's talk about the public hearing. Let's talk about the comments tonight. So when you walked in this evening, you signed into the meeting, which I appreciate very much. There's also a sign-in sheet that looks like this. And this sign-in sheet is for anybody who wants to share a comment tonight. You certainly don't have to. It's not a must. It's one comment channel. And if you do, right after we wrap up this presentation, there's a microphone set up right over there. What we'll do is just go right down in order in the list as far as when people signed up. We'll call you up, and you'll have up to three minutes to make any remarks, comments that you want to share with us. All of those comments, we'll make sure they're part of the record. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Three minutes is a lot of time. I also have handy dandy, hold on, I'll have to pull it out. I was going to get it out later, but I'll show it to you now. I have this nice, we used to have a real one of these that NDOT brought around. Now I just have my little paper traffic signal that will tell you when time is getting close to three minutes, but three minutes is a lot of time. So I don't anticipate any issues there. I'll hold this up and give a warning, and then we'll go to red. So we have a few names on the sign-up. If you hear more information as we're going through the presentation tonight, and you're like, darn, I wish I would have signed up. I think I have something to say. Please do. Barry's right down here in another gray shirt. He has another sign-in sheet. So if you decide you want to speak, no problem at all. Just head over there, and he'll get your name on the schedule there. So this is only one opportunity to comment with the public hearing. We also have several others. We have what is now called a formal comment period. And this started when we released what is called the Draft Environmental Document. And we'll be talking a little bit more about that if, when you signed in tonight, if you happen to see a very large binder with a lot of pages. That's our Draft Environmental Document. It's about 700 pages long, so not a quick, easy read, but it does have, what's important about that is, it's all of the documentation of the work of the project team. So what are the things we've been doing? What's the information that we found? What's the environmental analysis? What are the impacts? Lots of charts and tables, lots of information. It's actually, it's set up in a very easy-to-digest way as far as if there's an area that you're interested in, there's a nice table of contents, there's several pieces of the appendices there, but we'll tell you exactly where to go to find the information that you're seeking. So that's also, we have one hard copy here. There's lots of other places you can find it as well. So what we're asking for you tonight is to let us know what you think about the recommendations that we're sharing. This is only one avenue. It doesn't matter which avenue you use to comment, all of those comments count the same. So share them with us tonight. Come up to the microphone. We'll record those comments. We will transcribe those comments. They'll become part of the project record. Any comments that are received during the formal comment period will be responded to in that final environmental document. So you'll see the questions that were asked, and you'll see the responses from the project team. So you can do that tonight. You don't have to. We also have a comment form that we gave you this evening. It's in your packet tonight. You have a letter that tells you how this is going to go down tonight, what's going to be happening. You have this comment form. So if you want to fill this out and leave this with us tonight, that's more than fine as well. That counts. If you want to take a little more time with it, and you don't want to fill it out tonight, that's okay. You can mail it to us, and there's information on the back. There's an address where you can mail it to us. You can scan it in. You can send it to us on the project website. Or if you just want to share your comments, and you don't want to use the comment form, that's fine too. Just drop it to us on our website. If you want to give NDOT a call and let them know that you want to share a comment for Revive I-70, please do that. But do circle this date. That October 19th is important. That is the formal comment period, and we want your comments before then so we can respond to those in the final environmental document. So here, we're just going to do a bit of a reset before I hand off to John to let you know what to expect from this project. It's a long corridor. So we talked about this when we got together at the last meeting. This is 20-plus miles. So we are taking you all the way from the state line here to west of Cambridge City. And it is an area that was built many decades ago. And kind of everything's the same age on this corridor, right? The pavement, a lot of the bridges are in the same shape, same condition. They've been around for 60-plus years now. They all need attention. They all need love. So how are we planning to do that and give this corridor the attention it needs? NDOT has committed to doing that, and they have a plan to deliver this project. John's going to talk more about that. So when we're talking about Revive I-70, we're talking about improving your commute. So if you're somebody who is driving I-70 now, you see the problems, right? You see the fact that there's a lot of truck traffic on I-70. A lot of times, you might be in that car that is stuck behind some truck traffic. We need to give people a little more space. And you also see that the pavement needs some attention, needs some things to happen there. So we're talking about pavement improvements. We're talking about adding a travel lane in some areas. And we're talking about improvements for bridges, widening those bridges. So even if this is not a particular section of the project that right now has an added travel lane coming, when that added travel lane comes, those bridges are ready to accommodate, which is very smart. Also, taking care of the drainage, all of the things that need attention. Lighting is a big deal. Signage. All of those things throughout the 20-plus mile corridor are going to get attention. So where we are now, we are in what's called the environmental and design stage. That's the environmental document that we talked about, draft right now. We are working very closely. When you have a project this big, it is a very coordinated effort. We speak with local officials, state officials, federal officials, lots of coordination going on, input from the public. What we hear from you is a very big deal. That matters. And so please do let us know your feedback. And then one thing that we put on here when we talk about big picture, I know a lot of times when people hear about a project, they want to say, okay, when? When does it affect me? When's it going to happen? So we know when construction would start for Contract 1. We expect that to start late next year. The rest of it is going to depend on funding and how the other two contracts come about, but we do expect Contract 1 construction to start in late '24. So that's going to be here before we know it. And with that, I'm going to do a handoff and let John step in and kind of walk through those improvements. There's a lot of stuff on the horizon here as far as those improvements and what to expect. So we'll do a little swap-off here, and I'll get my stuff out of his way so I'm not fluttering up. And then we'll pick up with a little wrap-up at the end, and we'll move right into the public comment period. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mindy. So project delivery. This contract has been broken up into three different segments. Reason being is 21 miles is a lot to work in at one point, at one time. So we wouldn't be able to work on that much roadway at one time. So let's try and phase this that makes a lot of sense. But also, if we break this up into smaller contracts, we can bring in more competition, some more contractors to bid on it. Hopefully, we get better prices at the same time. So the first part we're going to be working on is Contract 1. That is the orange section on the east end. The reason why we are working on that first is that is the busiest section in this corridor, and there's a lot of truck traffic, and there's a lot of hills. So when you have those trucks trying to climb those lanes, it is helpful to have the third lane. That way, it doesn't cause congestion with everyone else. Who doesn't necessarily need to go 45 miles up that big hill coming from 40? So the next section would be Contract 2, and that's what you see in the left-hand part of your screen in yellow. That letting is about six months behind the orange. The reason why that one is next is there's a lot of bridges that need a lot of work on that end. And then the middle section, which is the blue, you may be asking yourself, well, why are you doing the middle section last? We understand that the roadway is in really bad shape. There's a lot of patching. However, if something bad happens on the bridge, you have to go out there and do some major work. If something happens bad with the roadway section, you can get a crew out there to immediately patch it and then open the lanes back up. With the bridges, it takes a little longer and it takes a lot more effort. So that's why we need to focus our efforts in the yellow second for the bridges, and then the, and then the blue in the middle is roadway that will come third. A little bit more information, like we talked about, the orange section or Contract 1, we're going to let in early '24. What that means is we will award a contractor in early '24. Contract 2, which is the yellow, we will award that contract in fall of '24. And then the blue, which is the middle section, that will go later down the road, probably about '26 or '27. And what we're trying to do is get as much work done in Contract 1 and 2 to then come back and do Contract 3. So some of the improvements we're looking at are road reconstruction for the whole corridor. For the east end, we are for sure adding an additional travel lane on the inside. For Contracts 2 and 3, we're assessing that, but it looks like we may end up needing that, but it still needs to be assessed. We're going to be touching almost every single bridge within the corridor. Again, like Mindy said, the bridges are now at the same life expectancy as the roadway. Bridges are expected to last a little longer than road, so we don't have to replace all of them, but every bridge needs some kind of work to it. And then we're going to do some interchange improvements at '35 and '40 that we'll talk about briefly. So when we're all said and done, what is this travelway going to look like? And this is what it is for Contract 1. We're going to hold the outside edges of pavement and work our way in work. That does a couple of things. One, it achieves the additional lane on the inside. Right now, you'll see a grass median, and you'll see that cable barrier. That's going away. We're going to put travel lanes each side with concrete median barrier. But it also means that we don't have to start grading or widening to the outside, which eliminates our need for right-of-way, almost to the point where we almost need very little, and that's just at '35 and a couple of the drainage areas. So this typical section doesn't need additional right-of-way. One of the improvements at '35 takes a little bit of farmland, and then some of the drainage Contract 2 and 3, like I said, they'll still be identified if the third lane, it needs to be done. And so we will determine that in the next six months or so. Everything else, we kind of described about where the widening is going to go. The bridges. So if the road is going to get the additional lane, obviously, the bridges are going to need the additional lane. And what you see at the bottom is just an example of what it will look like. Again, very similar. We'll add additional lanes to the inside on those bridges with concrete median barrier down the, down the middle. There are 41 bridges in the project area. That's for the whole corridor. We'll be widening to the inside to account for the additional travel lane. Now, we've, our team has gone out and assessed every single bridge, what are the needs? And I use this example a lot is when you assess a bridge, it's kind of like assessing your car, and you have to do maintenance on your car. Sometimes your car needs four tires. Sometimes it needs an oil change. Well, it needs an oil change, that doesn't necessarily mean it needs a new engine, so don't pay for a new engine. And that's what you're seeing in these different levels. Some of the bridges need to be replaced. They have just hit the end of the life expectancy. They're in deteriorating condition, and we need to replace them. 15 need major rehabs, so we might be ripping the deck off or doing some major work, patching. Some of them need a little bit less work. The overlays, so going back to the whole oil thing. The overlay is that top layer, we're going to strip that off. We're going to patch what needs to be patched, and then put a new sealant on the deck to extend that bridge life another 15, 20 years. And the last thing is preventative maintenance. That's pretty minor work, that may be painting the bridge. So as you can see in the picture, you see the blue beams. Those are the bottom part of the bridge. We would scrape that paint off and repaint it, and again, just helping to seal in to keep those beams from rusting. So the interchange work. The first interchange we're going to be looking at modifying is US-35. Now, we did assess, should we redo the whole interchange? And that's a whole lot of money. Right now, we're trying to focus on trying to upgrade 70, replace the pavement because it's been patched the heck out of it. It needs that additional lane. So right now, there's not the funding to redo all of 35. We felt like there's a better use of money to use that elsewhere, but we found some cost-effective measures that maybe help improve the situation. So if you are on 70 heading westbound, and you want to get off at US-35 and go south, as soon as you go under that bridge, you basically have to be slamming on your brakes, peeling off, and getting in that loop ramp to head south on 35. We are going to extend that deceleration distance, to extend that exit ramp a significant amount. So that is from the orange on the right-hand screen all the way to the opposite on the left-hand side where we start going up that loop ramp. Motorists will have that entire distance to start slowing down, which will be a significant improvement. I heard from one gentleman today that there have been some overturned vehicles with that existing loop ramp where people are trying to slam on their brakes and make that movement, and trucks overturn. That should be greatly reduced because now those motorists have a lot longer distance to slow down. And then we will barrier-separate the westbound exit ramps from main line. That way, cars can't be merging and weaving at the same time. You've made your decision to exit at 35, whether it's northbound or southbound, or you've made your decision to stay on 70. And that way, motorists will have a long distance to slow down at a safer rate without having to worry about cars merging or weaving lanes. For the eastbound direction, we are extending that acceleration distance. So as you can see, when you got the two loop ramps on the left-hand side of your screen, we're going to extend the acceleration distance to the right-hand side of the screen, so hopefully allowing motorists to get up to speed, but also giving them more time to merge onto 70. With the additional lane on 70, hopefully, we'll get some of those motorists out of that right lane, which will allow more gaps for motorists to merge in, hopefully making the whole situation significantly safer. At US-40, this is an area that just needed a major rehaul, and that's why we are reconfiguring the whole thing. We're making the interchange much simpler. We're reducing pavement assets, which also makes maintenance a lot easier and a lot cheaper. So a lot of the loop ramps that are super tight, and that's where people have to really slow down going 25 miles an hour. They may have to slam on their brakes. They may have to accelerate to get onto 40 that they want to. That's all going away. We're going to get rid of all the loop ramps. We're going to add the roundabouts to help increase safety. Motorists on 40 that had to turn left to get on 70, they don't have to do that anymore. They have to cut across two lanes of traffic. So this greatly simplifies everything while making things a little bit safer than the existing situation. Plus, the pavement in here isn't looking very good. It had to be replaced anyway. So at that point, let's make things simpler, replace the pavement, make the whole interchange a little bit cheaper in the long run. We're also going to add new pedestrian facilities on 40. Now, underneath the US 7, or the I-70 bridges on 40, there are already some existing sidewalks. There's no sidewalks that go to or from that situation, but Richmond does want to see some more pedestrian connectivity, and this will help that with future projects down the road that go into Richmond. They will be able to access or come off of the pedestrian facilities that this interchange has already seen. So we'll, from right-of-way to right-of-way, we'll add sidewalks on both sides. Some additional improvements, all-new lighting, all-new interchange lighting, all-new signage. We already talked about replacing the pavement to a longer-life pavement, so it's going to be a little bit thicker or a little beefier. Maybe some steel will be in the pavement to help extend that life. NDOT really doesn't want to go out there and patch this area every three years again, just like you all don't want to go out there and have your commute added another 20 minutes because NDOT's out there patching. So we're going to put some much longer extended-life pavement, all-new drainage improvements as well. So maintenance of traffic. That is, how do you build the project or construction sequencing? We're going to maintain two lanes almost all the time. We can't say all the time because a lot of times, pavement markings happen at night. They may have to shut down a lane to do some pavement markings, but that is some short-term closure that may happen at night, maybe on the weekend. For the remaining part of the time, which is 99% that this is going to be under construction, we're going to maintain two lanes in each direction. There may be some short-term closures at the ramps. We do have to make those tie-ins and connections. In order to do that safely with a quality product, we will have to provide a short-term closure. There were eight bridge replacements for the whole project, a couple in this. Contract number one, in order to make that happen, we may have to close some of the local roads with some detours, but again, not super-long detours, but in order to make the project work, we will. And then the Cardinal Greenway Trail, currently, there's a bridge over that trail. We're looking at maybe reducing that to a box or a smaller bridge. In order to make that work, we will have to close the trail for 180 days because we don't want pedestrians walking through while construction is going on. We've already coordinated with the Cardinal Greenway Trail. They're on board with that closure to make that happen. It makes the whole construction expeditiously in order to open that trail back up as soon as possible. Things to know, very little right-of-way, that's extremely important. We've already talked about holding the outside existing edge and working our way in the middle. In order to make that 35 interchange modification work, we did have to buy a little bit of right-of-way from the field on the northeast corner. And then there was two other areas where some of the culverts extended beyond the right-of-way, and we had to go reacquire that right-of-way in order for NDOT to be able to possibly maintain those or inspect those in the future. And then construction is expected to start in late '24. And I'm going to hand it back off to Mindy to talk about what to expect next.
Awesome. Oh, well, that was not a graceful dance. We should have practiced. Okay. So what to expect? This timeline is in your handout. If you need to pick up some extra handouts on your way, we do have some. It has a lot of good information. So this also is also available on the project website, but a lot of the boards, information, interchange improvements that John spent a lot of, he shares some great information. There's nothing like hearing it from the person and hearing him explain that. But this takeaway, if you know somebody who needs one of these and was not able to make it tonight, friend, family, coworker, grab some on the way out if you would like to. Include it in that, our extra copies of the comment form as well. So this timeline, we've already talked a little bit about, but we're right in the third box there with the public hearing. So we are actually right on time, maybe even a little bit ahead of schedule with that. And then we expect that first contract that John talked about to let early next year, and then we expect that construction, as we talked about, to begin late next year. So there are a couple of things here before we get into the public comment portion that we want to talk about. First of all, we just want to make sure that you know how to stay in contact with the project, that you know how to follow us. So the website is a great repository of information. It's at revivei70.com. Everything that you've put eyes on tonight, the presentation, the boards, everything is, the comment form, the handout, are already posted at the project website. You'll see a link from the homepage that's going to take you right there. While you're on the project website, if you want to sign up for project updates, it's a great idea. We're not going to bombard you with information, but when we hit big milestones like this one, we'll make sure that you know what's going on with the project. So if you sign up, whatever your preference is, whether that's an email, whether that's a text, we'll get it in your direction. And if you're not following us already, social media is also great. Facebook, and then we have Twitter slash X that you can follow us. We put out information, and we'll let you know what's going on with the project. Also, you get a nice kind of flavor for behind-the-scenes. So when we had the public meetings earlier this summer, we talked to several of our project team members like John, like Brad back there. So they're explaining some of the things that are going on. So when we talk about improvements to more than 40 bridges, why are we talking about that? What kind of improvements? What's going to happen? Well, Brad's a bridge guy, so Brad spent some time talking to us about that. So we'll have a short little video that's going to live on the website, going to be on social media, that's going to be letting you know what's happening with the bridges and other improvements there. I talked about that very dense Draft Environmental Document that's in that binder out there. We also have that, of course, posted on the project website as well. And it's also, as I said, it's not just 700 pages of information. It's all broken out by section so you can follow along. That's on the website. If that is not the way that you want to access information, if you don't want to go online and access information, we have had for a couple of weeks now, hard copies that have been in these area locations. So we're at the library there in Richmond, the municipal buildings in both Richmond and Centerville. We're in the city building in Cambridge. We're at the NDOT sub-district as well in Cambridge, and again, online. So if you want to do that deeper dive, we invite you to do so. The information is available. If you need a copy of that document, it's a lot, but if you need it, let us know, and we can get that to you. Okay, so a couple of things here. We want to talk about just finding out information about the project. What we use is our contact channels, NDOT for You. It's a very smart system. So anytime you have a question, comment, concern about any NDOT project, simply reach out to NDOT for You using those contact channels. You want to reference whatever you're talking about. In our case, you're going to say, hey, I have a comment question about Revive I-70. Share that information. They do that in a very deliberate way. So they log your request. If they cannot give you the information that you're looking for right then, they keep that open, and they make sure that that case is resolved and they get your response. So they do that in a very smart way at NDOT. So it's a great way to stay in touch. As far as tonight, we've talked about all of the ways that you can share comments as part of the formal comment period. You can sign up to speak. You can complete that comment form. You can go to our website. As I said, you can scan that comment form. Just drop us an email. If you want to call NDOT for You, you can do that as well. So we are to the public comment portion, or getting there very, very quickly, of the hearing. So I didn't see anybody else additional go up. I have a list here of some folks who have signed up to speak. If there is anybody additional who wants to sign up to speak, Barry will take, oh, I think I may have an additional, and I wasn't putting eyes on it. So, okay, I do have, thank you, Barry. I appreciate it. He keeps me on the straight and narrow, so that's good. But what we will do is go down that list, and again, what we will do is just invite you to come up to this podium over there. That mic is also on. And you have three minutes, but if you need a little more time, we're not going to slap any hands here. And then we will also transcribe all of those comments. Those are part of our environmental document, and we include responses in that final environmental document. So I'll call your name. I'll do the very best that I can to make sure that I am pronouncing that correctly. And if I do not, I ask everybody, when you come to the podium, please start out by just telling us your name as well. Do you want to do a quick mic switch? I thought that, yes. We will accommodate our media friends, and we'll let them do a quick mic check. And then the other item that you'll see there, just so you're not concerned, you'll see a very small recorder that's on the podium. That just helps us to ensure that we're transcribing the comments, capturing all of your remarks, the comments, capturing all of your remarks, and as I said, those become part of the environmental document. Because we have three minutes to make comments, I don't think it's going to be an issue. When we get to the point that you have 30 seconds remaining, I'm just going to hold up the yellow light, and then when time has expired, I will hold up the red light, and I ask you just to wrap up your comments as quickly as you can. And then the other thing that I will point out before we begin, this is a chance for us to listen and take your comments. We will not be responding here tonight, but we will be responding in that final environmental document, so that's where you will see your response. So with that, I will invite our first speaker up, and James Mayer.
That's correct, I'm good though.
Okay.
Did a great job answering my questions.
Thank you, James, appreciate it very much. Okay, Keith Webster.
I'm with James, I think my questions were covered.
Appreciate it, Keith, thank you very much. Kenneth Stapleton.
Yes.
Yes, sir. And the mic will be yours, and the podium will be yours, right over there, and take your time. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Ken Stapleton, I live on Amherst Drive, and it's a dead-end street, and my house is the last house on the street. If you email my house, it'll show my house sitting right on Interstate 70, that's how close I am. And we would like to try to get some kind of concrete barriers, or some kind of retaining wall or something, to, when these trucks collide, this was in my driveway, this piece was behind my car in my driveway, and this piece was in my yard to the left of that. And it, you know, when the semi hit the other one in the back, it stuff went flying. And there's a lot of kids plays on that street, it's like I say, it's a cul-de-sac, they ride their bicycles down there, and their skateboards and everything like that, and a lot of people from the hotels, they come down, they walk their dogs and jog and stuff, and we need some kind of a barrier better than this guard rail they got right now. I've lived there since '75, and we, I've picked up pieces of tires out of my backyard, lug nuts, hubcaps, about, you know, about anything, you know, come off of a car or truck, you know. So that's my concern, I'd just like to maybe have somebody look at that, and maybe something can get done about it, put some kind of barrier better than a guard rail. And you don't have to put a long one up, I mean, it don't have to be very big, just to cover that cul-de-sac where these kids and stuff, they play basketball and stuff out there, nobody gets hurt or killed. And that's my comment, that's all I got. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Stapleton, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it. James Farrar, and I may not be getting your last name quite right, you'll let us know when you get up to the podium. Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is James Farrar, I'm Kenny Stapleton's neighbor. I'd like to add that where the children play, there are 26 houses, and children play at the end of a dead-end, the circle. And that's, imagine 70 is right there where the wall meets the ceiling, and it runs this way. The children play right here, and in that turnaround, I picked up lug nuts, exhaust, tire cords from blowouts, and anything that could hit a child, which I have video of the children playing there with the semis in the background, if anybody wants to see it, I got it right now, and all there is is a guard rail. And if a child or anybody gets hit by something, and I haven't spoke about it, I couldn't live with myself. So I'm here to tell you now, something needs to be done for safety. And the only thing we can find is noise barrier, we could not find anything for safety barrier. And they proposed a 1,700-foot wall length, when all we need is 20%, 200 or 300 feet to protect the public in front of my house in that turnaround. I don't, I don't know what else to say, I mean, it's, it's, I feel better by expressing that safety needs to be done, and I'm passing it on to you guys, my conscience is clean, I can sleep better.
Thank you, Mr. Farrar, appreciate your time. Next up will be Kent Carson.
My name's Kent Carson, I live on US 35 North, just about two miles north of US 70. On several issues, the sidewalks, I just feel like it's an incredible waste of money, nobody walks there. It's been since the late 60s or early 70s that you would see a hitchhiker now and then on the ramp, and if you get your way with those traffic circles, it would be suicide to even walk there. The time and money would be better spent elsewhere, like a sidewalk from Salisbury Road, trailer court to Love's, put a berm on 35 North where the Amish. The traffic circles, I'm just not a big fan of them at all, it's like watching a figure eight race at Anderson Speedway. They're, they're more set up for low-volume traffic intersections, and not for a four-lane highway doing 40 or 50 mile an hour in heavy truck traffic. There's one just south of Greenville, Ohio, on US 36, and it's not a straight shot to the circle, and you can see all the tire marks on the curbs where trucks run over them. The east, the 70 East ramp to 40 West just falls off the side of 70. You're going to have to put up some kind of warning light to prepare to stop, because I can just see a bunch of rear-end collisions. And to the 70 West to 40 East has a bend in 70 in the road, and you don't have a good line of sight there either. And when you bring all those semis down, and they have to stop at the circle, instead of merging onto US 40, you're just going to back up traffic on 70 to get off. And once the semis pull out in front of somebody on the US new traffic circles on 40, then you're going to have a long line of trucks that will back up traffics on 40. You have enough real estate to put in another ramp there for 40 East to 70 West. The 70 US 35 exit ramp wall, I don't see where you got the real estate to put that wall up, since the exit ramp is up against the bridge pier now. The state needs to offer a bonus on contract to get the job done ahead of completion date. And also, the state needs to start deducting from the contracts for late completion every month this late. The US 27 North and South project, from North A to South L took way too long, and the US 27 would sit there for weeks and months with nothing happening. And I feel like you need to start the road project from Cambridge and head towards Ohio, and not skip around. There's a lot more major bridges from US 35 to the Ohio line, and if you can get extra crews, a head start on all these bridges before the road project gets there, it'd be a lot smoother transition. And also, I didn't realize that it wasn't a done deal to run six lanes all the way, but you've really got to start at the Centerville rest area with that sixth lane, because we've raced at Newcastle since the late 70s, and for some reason, when you get to the rest area at Centerville, this is a traffic magnet. That's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Carson, thanks for coming out tonight, appreciate it. And we have one more person signed up, and that's Barry Kramer.
Good evening, I'm Barry Kramer, I live on South 21st Street here in Richmond. I am advocating the inclusion of bicycle accommodations at the I-70-US 40 interchange by substituting somewhat wider multi-use trails for the proposed five-foot sidewalks, in line with complete streets thinking. I previously did so by email and by upload to the project website on September 6, after attending the August 9 public hearing. The environmental assessment form I've looked at is dated September 5, a day prior to my submission, and therefore doesn't address it. I do want to ensure that this does get into the public record. I take issue somewhat with the environmental assessment's declaration that it complies with local and regional development plans. That's your quotation, inasmuch as it does not mention the City of Richmond Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan of June 2015. Specifically mentioned in the Community Impacts section of the assessment are the Richmond Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Richmond Rising, a Community Action Plan of 2019, Wayne County Comprehensive Plan of 2020, and Eastern Indiana Transforms Regional Economic Development Plan of 2018. The City of Richmond Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan is not named. The environmental assessment notes that the proposed sidewalks that were just spoken about will connect to a new sidewalk segment proposed by the City of Richmond along US 40. If the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan is given its due respect, the same forward-looking argument can be made for a multi-use path, in that it recommends such a facility be built on US 40 out to the I-70 interchange at some time in the future. To the best of my thinking, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan in Richmond was a required piece of the process when funding was received for the construction of the downtown bike track known as the Loop. It is unfortunate that this important document was overlooked in the present planning process. To ignore it now seems wrong, given how much money this city has received based on its creation, and I hope that End dot and the City of Richmond will coordinate further to address this. I doubt that the cost factor involved would be significant. I am an advanced rider, bicycle rider, yet I rarely venture onto that section of highway. I sometimes see others riding out there, and I feel concerned every time. Some of them are clearly interstate travelers, some are locals just trying to get around town. I'm aware of at least one bicyclist's death on that stretch many years ago, and I don't believe conditions have improved in the meantime. End dot needs to be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kramer, I appreciate it. And I don't believe we had anybody else signed up, anybody else who would enjoy the opportunity to speak this evening?
Could I?
Yes, please, absolutely. Was it Mr. Webster? Yes.
My name's Keith Webster, I live in Fountain City. Kind of want to follow up with Mr. Carson's comments, offering performance bonuses. We need more oversight, I would suggest more oversight, when whoever wins these bids are actually laying down the roads. Did you happen to drive over here from Indianapolis today, all the way to 150? We patch, we repatch. I wonder if there are statistics correlating the number of accidents on the interstate with the terribly poor condition of our highway. Most of our county roads in Wayne County are in better shape than I-70 on any given day. I think we should consider stronger oversight, as I overheard one of the gentlemen talking to a small group out in the hallway, didn't hear it in this room, and a definite sticking to standard of the material that we're putting down on these roads, because they just don't seem to last as long in Indiana as they do in other parts of the country. And it's just as bad going west, too, so be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Webster, appreciate it. And with that, it's going to wrap up the public comment portion of the hearing. As I said, you can expect to see the comments this evening, will be in the final environmental document, along with responses to those comments. Comment period is one final reminder, runs through October 19. Please feel free to leave a form with us tonight. Open house portion continues until 7 o'clock. Anybody in gray shirt or with a name tag, if you have questions, if you're looking for immediate feedback tonight, come and talk to us, we're more than happy to talk to you. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, appreciate your time very much, thank you.